So, just other some quick bits. Athletics, we should be very proud of those students. Twenty of our, almost twenty of our students went down to four-year institutions and garnered over a million dollars in scholarships. That says a lot about our coaching staff. It's not just committed to winning, they're committed to those, those, those young men and young women's education. And we have an eighty-five to ninety percent transfer rate of our athletes. So, we should be very proud of what our athletes do and with the leadership our coaches provide them. Did anybody go to the football game last week? All right. So, we played Laney College, which was last year's national champ, and we beat them thirty-three, twenty. We, and after that win, our college is now fifth-ranked in the state. So, can I hear you? Go Pirates!
Go Pirates!
All right, go Pi—oh, maybe a little bit better. That was really weak. Go Pirates!
Go Pirates!
All right. And let me just skim through a couple things. We did go to Sacramento to a guided pathways meeting, and was there with Fred and Jennifer and Curtis and Tiffany and Rob. And I think for me, it was one of the most effective workshops I've been to in a long time. And it was nice to hear from national leadership on guided pathways that they're really impressed with a lot of work that we're doing here at MJC. So, I hope we push forward and then we become a national leader in redesigning community college for those young men and women against the back wall. I think, I think I'll end it there. It's getting light. I just, real briefly, to follow up on what Shelley said, I was so very impressed with the distinguished classified staff awards. It went to Cheryl Garcia and, let's see, Juan Garcia. And also the Purdy Awards to Sam Pierstof and Peggy Fisk. They gave some of the best speeches I've heard in a long time. I think it energized everybody in the audience. And also, we got a good speeches from Marion Cannon and Scott Kikekendall, especially Marion. Had a lot of people thought that she was very inspiring. And the whole morning, I think it really helped us understand that we need to recommit and commit more to the community. And so, Stanislaus County's, County of Education wants to continue our work with MJC and really build that effort going forward. So, I'll end there and turn it over to my colleague, Dr. B.
Thank you, Dr. Hoopis. It seems in-service day is so far out, it's just a couple of weeks back, and we got this class of, new class of students with us. And as we were talking about them, this is the Generation Z, as we call them, the digital natives who are entering the college system now. They always had smartphones, they always had twenty-four-hour TV channels, and all of those kind of things. Most of us who are teaching these digital natives, we happen to be the visitors in the digital world. So, we have some catch-up to do in order to be at pace with them. And in order to be at pace with an environment they would be comfortable, right now, we almost treat them in an analog environment in our campuses. Our campuses need to get to the digital environment as well, so we can be in synchrony, the digital natives, digital teachers, and digital environment, probably to bring it to the full cycle. Thank you, Trustee Beck and Trustee DiMartini for joining us on the adjunct in-service day, and Trustee Balkin. And Trustee Rojas is not here, plus both of you were there on our regular in-service day. It was a great to have all of you there and support our students and staff. We started the fall semester with seven-hundred-and-eighty-five FTEs, marginally higher than what we were last year. This becomes very significant for us for a couple of reasons, that unlike in Stanislaus County, in our area, Calaveras County, Antholomny County, number of high school graduates is continuously declining. So, when we have a declining population who is coming out, becoming college-ready, to increase the numbers, that's like a double challenge, doubly challenging issue. And Brian has always been looking at the number of sections that we offer, so we can try to keep on increasing our efficiency and effectiveness. So, that way, our programs in CCAP, in Sierra Conservation Center, plus the online offerings that is bringing some fruit out here, and we are delighted that it's going in the right direction. Thanks to the Foundation Scholarship Program, forty percent of the students from Sonora High and fifty percent of the students from Salisbury Bill, Bill High School, they are coming to Columbia College this year. That's a wonderful number, forty to fifty percent of the students coming up here to us. And based on the success that we are seeing, we are also planning now, if we can expand the promised program, to include Waterville, Waterford, and Oakdale, so that those students also can benefit from this and our CCAP programs keep growing. As you heard before, that EMP/FMP Educational Master Plan and Facilities Master Plan Committees are being formed at the campus. Our current EMP/FMP is expiring in 2021. So, how do we treat these digital natives and how do we welcome them to our world? We'll be talking about that collectively as a campus community in the next few months to develop our EMP, our Facilities Master Plan for the next ten years. This semester, we are focusing on the issues of safety in general and fire safety in particular very closely. I had a meeting with some of the experts. We have a lot of expertise in our campus in terms of tree management, active forest management, and active fire management. And if you look at our campus from the drone pictures that I saw, no building is safe out there. Every building has trees very close to them. And when this winds pick up and we have a relative humidity of four percent or five percent, we are in a danger zone. So, we are talking about what we can to make it safer. We'll never make it foolproof to fire, but by introducing some of the breaks in the fire lines, by introducing some passageways for the trucks to reach there, we can definitely keep us safe. In that same spirit, we are also going to engage in a campus safety drill. That would be the day before the next board meeting happens in Columbia. So, you would hear the debris from the drill, fresh from us, it'll be fresh in our mind, that how we evacuate the buildings and how successful or unsuccessful we are in that effort. I'm looking forward to that day and seeing how much of coordination and coherence we can bring when we are doing this drill after so many years. Our theme this semester is to build a strong campus community. And I'm reaching out not only to the campus communities, but also to the local communities, the civic organizations in our area, so that we can bring a good cohesive bond between the college and the communities that we serve. And that's very vital for our existence and moving forward. One of the things that we are trying to do this semester is an invitational event, the state of the college, where we would have specific people from the communities to come to the campus by invitation only and share what we do in terms of contribution to the community. Shelley, you talked about attending sports and events. So, tomorrow evening, we have Ultimate Frisbee at five o'clock at Simons Field. Your presence is solicited. Lastly, but not the least, Columbia College is a small campus, but I did not know we had a global presence. This weekend, I was in Mexico, for a forty-eight-hour, celebrating our friend's anniversary. So, forty-eight hours of Mexico trip tells you what kind of partying went on. And I'm coming back, I'm in the plane, and I'm about to sit down, I hear somebody says, "Shantenu?" Like, what? There was somebody from our Columbia College family in the same flight, was also partying at Cabo at the same time. I'm lucky we did not end up in the same resort. That concludes my report.
Yes.
I would be remiss not to recognize our, our new interim VP of Administrative Services. Sorry, Schrader, take a bow. And, and just as a motive, just a bit of correction, earlier today, you were talking about all these things that you would be doing, those things just fell off your plate. So, we're looking forward to working with you.
So mean, Jim. Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay. Chancellor Young.
Thank you. I'd like to begin my remarks this evening by giving you a report from our first district council. It was a great meeting. We have new leadership from different constituency groups. And we had a journey for nostalgia in which we look at the emergence and the birth of the district council at the Yosemite Community College District. We noted that while the district is almost a hundred years old, this institution of the district council is much younger. And we then discovered it was because the year prior, the governor at that time, Governor Duke Majin, signed AB seventeen-twenty-five, that calls for consultation with the faculty. And so, with that, in YCCD and across the land, district councils and similar type of venues will convene to have this engagement. So, with that great meeting, we look forward to a year where we will be able to sit down together, have good conversation, and discuss things that not only are problems for our district, but also opportunities for our district. Next, I want to give you an update regarding the dual enrollment outreach. We had a visit to Turlock not long ago, in which MJC, represented by Dean Betancourt and VP Zalit, gave an update to the trustees of the board regarding the progress of dual enrollment with that particular district. And just a few days ago, trustee DiMartini and I visited and met with the superintendent from the Gastine School District. Gastine is also very much interested in having dual enrollment at its two high schools. So, I will be forwarding their requests to President Hoopis and his administrative team to see how we could best serve the West Side. HSI opportunities. MJC is a Hispanic-serving institution. This is a federal designation, and it is only granted to institutions that have at least twenty-five percent Hispanic student enrollment. MJC is one. So, as an HSI, we try to promote success for our Hispanic students and their grants for that purposes. Those are called Title V Grants. In many of the HSI across the country, the institute, institutions are very busy trying to increase success for the Hispanic students. But they're looking at the students that are coming from the high school. MJC and Columbia College are looking at serving students who are disadvantaged even before they come to high school. And this is a radically new approach. And specifically, the two colleges are looking at potential efforts at working with disadvantaged students at the middle school level. For Columbia, there may not be that many Hispanic students up there, but certainly, Columbia serves Native American population. And Native Americans is another ethnic group that is also disadvantaged, and the success rate could be improved. And so, it is with great excitement that I share with you this news this evening. And I look forward to the future, in a few months from now, to be able to give you updates on how the two colleges may be reaching out specifically guiding these middle school students to focus on STEM careers. And right now, we're having conversations on formulating the questions. The budget shortfall, you heard about the, it being mentioned, trustee Darren's report. We had one meeting with the polling company regarding the type of questions that we want to ask the community to gauge their support or lack of for a bond. I just want to let you know that I have asked Vice Chancellor Susan Yeager to set up town And I will give you further update as we get underway with the survey. halls at the two colleges to give information, to share more information pertaining to This is for the survey. And this will be the first step to bring the information back to the board and to be the new student funding formula and shortfall that we're experiencing. shared with the constituents as well on what is the sentiment out there pertaining to And we feel that the information needs to be shared. And so, Vice Chancellor Yeager will be working with the president's office to try and set possible bond. Last but not least, I want to give you an update about the swimming pool at the MJC. that up in the near future. I want to let you know that we are in recruitment for the district director of public safety. Time flies. It's been a year. It was Father's Day, and I was just about to sit down and have brunch when I was notified It is still open. We have some applications already received. that there had been explosion over at MJC. We hope to receive more. Well, I got in my car and I rushed down there. Also, we are also in recruitment for the vice chancellor of Educational Support Services. And when I was on campus, the smell of chlorine was still very distinct as I walked by the pool and I look at the destruction that was there. Well, the repair was quickly carried out by our facility staff, both from the Central Services and the MJC. That part was relatively easy. But unfortunately, the pool, well, I should say the pools, because there were two of them, have been taken offline because we have not gotten the green light to begin the actual renovation. And in the meantime, we want to be mindful that our swimming classes have all been relocated to the area high schools. Now, the interim president, Steve Collins, at my request, had visited Modesto City Schools at a board meeting to thank the principals and the administration for this kindness of assisting us. But I know there are also others in the community who are not getting the information and think that nothing has been done. Well, we are continuing to work with the Department of State Architects, and the Department of State Architects want to be sure that we update, I say the word update, compliance to the American with Disabilities Act for now. When the pools were constructed, they met the compliance back then. As long as we don't do anything extra, we don't do, we don't make any changes to it, we are fine. But now, we're attempting to renovate the pools. So, the Department of State Architects takes this opportunity to require us to meet the new standards for the ADA. And we are perfectly willing to do that because, you know, we want all our students in the community, including those with disabilities, to be able to utilize the pool to the extent that they see fit. So, we are working with them on that. At the same time, I want you to be aware that we still have not received a final report of the investigation by our insurance carrier on the cause of the explosion. Is it our fault for having a CO2 tank? Is it the fault of the vendor? Is it the fault of the CO2 tank servicing company? The final verdict is not out, and so the report is not out. So, those are the two things that are holding us up. However, we are led to believe in conversations after conversations with the folks from the insurance and that we would still be on target to reopen the pool sometime next summer. Once we receive the green light from the Department of State Architects, then of course, you know, the work will be put out for bid. And then, once the bid closes and a contractor or firm has been selected, we would expect that to go full speed ahead. So, in the meantime, we appreciate the interest of the community in wanting to see the pools being brought back as soon as possible. But we are doing the best we can, and we want to take this opportunity again to thank the area high schools for helping us out. And also, we appreciate the patience of everyone in working with us. And we will be happy to provide updates as they become available. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Yeah, I appreciate it very much. Okay, so we have a grant activity update. Attached for information purposes is a list of submitted and funded grants. So, we don't need a motion on that one.
Could I make a request? I have no idea how difficult it is to, to change the format, but if it's possible, I would appreciate knowing, I think it'd be nice if we knew which grants were new and which were recurring grants, so that it, some I know are brand-new, we've never had that grant before, but if we have a grant and we're receiving it again, I would just like to know if it's possible. I'd like that added to the report.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, so we are now up to action items. Is there anyone who wishes to pull a specific item off of the consent agenda for discussion? No?
Madam Chair, no, but I will ask for just some brief comments after we get a motion in a second.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Okay. All right. Would you like to speak after we have voted?
I can speak now.
Okay.
With respect to six point eight on the consent agenda personnel, I know it's been mentioned before, but we, we always do this up here at the dais. And I would like, like to recognize Jim Codoni for his forty-four years of service to the, to the district. You know, that's a long time. And, and that, that shows devotion, dedication, and just the love of the, of the community here at YCCD, so I want to thank him for that. And also, I want to thank Frank Fannin for his nine years of service in our campus security office. So, thank him as well. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, we have a motion to accept the consent item agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, so, we have already done seven point one. Let me know if I'm skipping anything. And we are up to, I believe, the budget, seven point two.
Tonight, we have before you the nineteen-twenty final budget for your approval. So, we're going to do things a little differently tonight, both in the interest of time and in the interest of, this is Dr. Schrader's last day with us. And so, Dr. Schrader—
Well, not really.
Well, with me, with fiscal services, I should say.
Thank you.
And then she'll go over to MJC, which Jim has mentioned approximately a millionth times today.
Yes, yes, yes.
So, and, so Sarah very nicely did the PowerPoint for me because somehow I could not find the time. And so, what I told her was, if there's something that I don't mention that you think should be mentioned, then by all means, you jump up and say it, because, you know, you don't often get that chance, but I think on your last night in fiscal services, you should get that opportunity. So, what I want to communicate out of this, any budget presentation really, is the environment that we're operating in, what our challenges are. I'm not really looking to go over every number that's on these, on these, these slides. So, let's see, where is it? It worked for Shantenu. Yay. I'm going to skip the agenda because we do have slides. All right, so, first, we're going to talk about the versions of the Student-Centered Funding Formula and the major changes. So, as you may recall, that this last year, eighteen-nineteen, was the first year of the Student Funding Formula, and we are at no less than version five of the Student-Centered Funding Formula. Three that impacted eighteen-nineteen, three, there were three versions in eighteen-nineteen, and many of those changes will move forward into nineteen-twenty, and then two versions that are impacting nineteen-twenty. So, you can see that in the left-hand column, the number of the versions. So, some of the major items that I want to point out is that on, if you look at the second block down, the SCFF number two, so, that was where we were told about a constrained total compensation revenue. TCR, or total compensation revenue, that was not a new term, but a constrained total compensation revenue, that was a new term. And so, it's the first time we'd ever heard that, but it roughly translates as a deficit factor. So, what that told us, and that factor at that point in time, which was approximately, it may revise, that factor was our seventeen-eighteen total computational revenue times eight-point-one-three percent. And that eight-point-one-three percent happened to be the seventeen-eighteen cola of two-point-seven-one percent times three. So, if you're looking for any connection to the Student-Centered Funding Formula, there is not one. So, we're, we're not talking about the Student-Centered Funding Formula. So, then, there were a number of changes. Number three, version three dealt mostly with changes in calculations, maybe errors and things they realized. So, you can see that in the left-hand column, the number of the versions. So, some of the major items that I want to point out is that on, if you look at the second block down, the SCFF number two. So, that was where we were told about a constrained total compensation revenue. TCR or Total Compensation Revenue, that was not a new term, but a constrained total compensation revenue, that was a new term. And so, it's the first time we'd ever heard that, but it roughly translates as a deficit factor. So, what that told us, and that factor at that point in time, which was approximately, it may revise, that factor was our 1718 total computational revenue times 8.13%. And that 8.13% happened to be the 1718 COLA of 2.71% times three. So, if you're looking for any connection to the Student Centered Funding Formula, there is not one. So, we're, we're not talking about the Student Centered Funding Formula. So then, there were a number of changes. Number three, version three dealt mostly with changes in calculations, maybe errors and things they realized that they had to correct. And number four dealt with, the most important parts were that they talked about getting the highest awards. So, before people were doing stacking, so you could get a number of certificates and then a degree, and you'd get points for all of them. Now, you'll only get the top achievement. So, if you get a degree, that's all you get. You don't get credit for the certificate. So, if you get a certificate, that's what, that's what we get credit for in, in our funding. So, they also introduced a three-year average for student success, whereas previously had been a one-year calculation. So, in five, the most important thing takeaway from there is that the rates will be adjusted mid-year. And the whole point of that is to make sure that the amount the state owes is equal to the amount that is in the funding. So, basically, it's a pie. The pie is not growing. And so, there's two problems with that. One is that the Student Centered Funding Formula is not fully funded. And so, if it were, then it wouldn't be a problem. They wouldn't have to keep changing the rates depending on performance. But number two, there's a new, new twist to this. We used to just worry about our performance. So, where was our FTES? We could project. It's up, it's down, and we knew what was going to happen. Now, we can know where our FTES is, and we could even to some extent know where our supplemental and our, our student success metrics are. But it's not just what we did. It's also how did we perform in relationship to the other 71 districts? And I'm deliberately excluding that statewide district. So, how did we perform in relationship to? Because if there's only so much money, then, you know, if we performed well, but we didn't perform as well, then we may not benefit in the way that we had originally thought. So, to give you an example, let's look at the 2018-19 Student Centered Funding Formula calculation versus the actual funding. And by the way, can you all hear me? Because I'm yelling, so I want to make sure you can hear me. Okay, so in 2018-19, our advance was, I'm going to change it. Our advance was 104.4. In March 2019, we, we got this, we got an update to the SCFF calculation. It's now at 107 roughly, 107 million. But we also were told that the TCR to be funded was 101.6 million. And basically, it was a deficit factor, 5.05%, roughly 5 million. There was yelling up and down the state. There were a lot of people very upset. Approximately two weeks later, in, and I remember this because I wondered why did they bother with the first one, a revised First Principal Apportionment Report came out, or P1, in April. The SCFF calculation is now at 106.2. It decreased a little bit because of those changes in calculations they were making. And now, we have that constrained TCR that I talked about previously. It's at 103.4. And then, we have this new number that shows up on our appendix C. That's where all of these numbers are sort of catalogued, if you will. And it says TCR reflecting available revenue is 99.2 million. And immediately, I thought, well, if that's all the revenue you have, how are you going to give me 103.4 million? And that was a good question because they're not. So, the next level down, let's see. Yes, the next level down was P2 in June 19. And so, our SCFF calculation is now down to 105.7. Again, they're truing up some things. They're making changes in the way things are calculated. And our constrained TCR is still 103.4. But now, the TCR to be funded is 102.8 million approximately. And please note that just in May, just a few weeks earlier, they had said uncategorically that categorically that, yes, we are absolutely certain that we can fund the constrained TCR. And so, we were all a little surprised to get our new report at 102.8 million dollars. Now, we will, I have to tell you, that we will come in several hundred thousand dollar less than this. And that has to do with the fact, if you recall, we rolled 300 FTES to 1718. So that we, we came in at 16,542 FTES. That turned out to be the exact right thing to do because in the SCFF, 1718 is the benchmark year for ever and ever and ever. So that we were at our highest FTES is good. We did not roll anything in 1819 because we weren't even getting paid for what we did do. We're getting paid this minus amount, so why roll? And we're moving away from that anyway. So, next, what happened was, let's see, how did, okay. So, next, we, they are sending out these models, or I think they call them simulators. And they are models that we can plug our information in. We were very conservative. We assumed no growth in either supplemental or student success metrics. And then, in addition to that, we assumed our FTES, I think, at, I want to say where we thought FTES was at that time. And it might have been 16, 16 to something, or maybe even 16.3. And so, with that, based on that current model, it came in, you know, around 110 or so million dollars. But we remembered, we could see this history, and so we did a deficit factor. And we also knew they were changing the formula still. And so, in July, we had, went to a budget workshop, and we got our advanced apportionment. And so, it was a little surprising to see that our advanced apportionment was 103.4 million. And we were not the only surprised district in the room. So, we benefited from several things. We hadn't allocated some of our budget because, again, we, we knew about some of this. We had been informed from the prior year. But nonetheless, we, we understood after the budget conference, I think, more than ever. I think we maybe assumed that 1819 was their sort of startup year, and it was a rugged start, but now maybe they were ready to get back to business. But please note that the 103.4 still has nothing to do with the Student Centered Funding Formula. They told us that they would give us new numbers at First Principal Apportionment Payment, which is March. And they said February at that time. But by February, we've already had the summer semester, the fall semester, and spring is underway. All that's really left is early start. So, we cannot assume that we will, A, get more money. See 1819 history. That's why I show you. And then, even if they give us a new number in February, or let's say recently, the Chancellor's Office has said they're going to try to get that number earlier, say November, even if they give us a number, we can't rely on it. And that's what we saw, seen last year. So, what we had to do was, we had to, through a combination of, between the tentative and the final budget, in total, we needed to reduce the budget by about, through either bringing in new revenue or reducing, we had to change the budget by, reduce the budget by about 4.7 million dollars. And I'll go over that briefly. And then, we also had to talk about how we're going to move forward. How are we going to budget for the future? And we do have the District Fiscal Advisory Committee is meeting regularly. We did have to stop over the summer because we had too many people out. But that's a question that will be taken up by, by that committee. We'll be working with them. And we did talk with the Board Finance Committee that we need to be looking at efficiencies everywhere, both colleges and central services. Because honestly, it doesn't matter whether we get 2 million more dollars or 10 million more dollars or 20 million more dollars. It's our obligation to spend the money as efficiently as possible so that we can provide the best educational program for our students. So, next, we're going to look at the state and the district budget assumptions. And I'm going to go through these really quickly. They are on page four. I think the, the highlights are that they did not change the allocation. So, we're still on the 70% base allocation, 20% supplemental allocation, and 10% student success allocation. And the whole harmless year was extended out to 2021. So, it's basically like we're starting over, if you want to think of it that way. And then, the change in the definition of a transfer student is, one, it's where the student lives, their residence. And so, a student can live in San Joaquin Delta and come here and never attend San Joaquin Delta. They will get the credit under this current paradigm. Hopefully, it's still under discussion. But secondly, they have to have taken 12 units in the prior year. While community colleges have a lot of part-time students, so, you know, that's, that's going to be complicated. Moving on to the state budget, there were just a couple of these. There was money in the state budget to buy down pers and stirs rates. There was a COLA of 3.26% for the SCFF and certain categorical programs. And I did forget to mention the effect of the, them using the constrained TCR of 103.4 million for our advance is that we did not get COLA. We got less than 1%. And you'll remember that we based our negotiations on a COLA of 3.26% and that did not come to fruition. So, that has been problematic in our budget. They also increased funds for the California Promise Program for a second year and the expansion of Cal grant programs to create a new Cal grant and increase award amounts for existing Cal grants. So, our students are going to get a little bit more financial aid, financial help with regard to that. So, on this page, what we're looking at is, we're looking at the differences in revenues from tentative to final budget. And so, you can see, we went from, in terms of apportionment, from 108.2 to 103.4. We did have a little bit of increase in lottery and interest income and other local revenue. We increased those based on actuals in 1819. And then, the Calsters on behalf payment actually went down. But I need to emphasize, the Calsters on behalf payment is a pass-through. We never see the money. So, the money doesn't come here. The expenditure doesn't happen here. It's purely an accounting thing that we have to do. And then, you'll see that there is, on line 11, there is a transfer in from Pension Rate Stabilization Trust. So, that is $718,000 that we would bring in to offset pers and stirs increases. Now, about this one, I would say that if we do get more money, we would prefer not to make that transfer. So, that fund stays whole as we move into a recessionary environment. The rest of the reductions that we made, that I'll talk to you about, I think those will go to the DFAC Committee for discussion of, you know, what do you think we should do? So, moving on to the expenditures, you can see our negotiated salary and benefit increases. That's the CSEA and LTAC. We have, you can see line four, the pers and stirs rate increases, and that matches that revenue that we're bringing in from the Pension Rate Stabilization Trust. Fringe benefits rate changes, and so these are just increases in workers' comp, disability, and the OPEB adjustment. That's that ongoing amount that we pay. And the cost of district initiated classification review, that was approved, I think, two months ago by the board. Number seven is operational costs that have increased. A large part of this was insurance. Both our fire and employment practices liability insurance increased quite a bit. We actually got, as much as it increased, 157,000 in total for our insurance this year. We got kind of lucky. Some districts actually couldn't get fire coverage. So, we weren't actually in the fire zone, so that was good for us. And finally, you can see that the Calsters on behalf payment, this is the increment to get that up to 2.9 million. And you'll see later that there's a, you know, it's the revenue of 2.9 million, expenditure of 2.9 million. On this page, I want to mention the negotiated salary increases. That is that 1% for CSEA, the one time. And then, we have on lines 11 and 12, those are earmarked for the colleges. So, those revenues were not put into the total pot. They were actually sent to the colleges this year. And we had expenditures on line 16 and 17. We had initially had a million dollars for the facilities TCO and 500,000 for the IT TCO. And we took those out of the budget. Additionally, you won't see this on this page, but we also removed the annual OPEB contribution of 975,000. When we went over this with the Board Finance Committee, we made it clear that this is, this is something that we did for this year only. It is not a long-term strategy. But, you know, given that we had to do this very quickly, we weren't able to talk to the District Fiscal Advisory Council, and we had to make decisions. But these aren't the kind of decisions we want to be in a position of making year after year. So, moving forward, this is the unrestricted general fund for the entire district. And moving through, you can see that we have revenues of, on line six, totaling 112.4 million dollars. And we have expenditures totaling 109.4 on line 14. And these include, you know, the academic salaries, all salaries, benefits, and so forth. And then, on the next slide, we show the contingencies and transfers out of 2.9 million. And line 17, you can see the 2.0, I mean, excuse me, of 2.954 million. You can see this is mostly the Calsters on behalf payment offsetting that revenue and a couple of other smaller items. And you can also see that under the capital outlay transfer TCO, there is zero. So, there would have been a million dollars there, but there's nothing at this point. So, we do have a balanced budget on line 23, so there's neither an increase or a decrease. On the next slide, we're looking at our fund balance. And so, our fund balance, the, on line 24 for 1920 is the same as the ending balance on line 33 from 1718, I mean, excuse me, 1819. And so, what we've done here, the board has asked that we have a plan for the fund, for the fund balance and perhaps look at increasing our reserve amount. I will be taking that to the DFAC. But in the meanwhile, we have on line 26, the 10% required reserve. And we have also added lines 28 and 29 to show a million dollars for facilities TCO and, and 500,000 for the IT TCO. So, there is, there is a tag. There is a line item, not reserve, but balance, fund balance for these items. But they are not budgeted this year. We're not bringing down our fund balance for them. So, we'll continue to work on this within the DFAC and come with a full proposal when we, when we're ready to do that. So, finally, we have each college by, each, each of the colleges and, and the central services. And so, in, for MJC, you can see that's $650,000 of revenue. That includes MJC's baccalaureate degree program and then the non-resident tuition. And then, on total expenditures, a total expenditures of $61.7 million. MJC is roughly 55% of expenditures. On Columbia, we have, they have 110,000 of non-resident tuition, and they have 14.6 million dollars of expenditures. They're roughly 13% of our total expenditures. Moving on to central services, the rest of the revenue is sort of held in central services, but it's really actually with the district budget, district-wide budget. So, the expenditures for the central services are approximately 33.1 million or 29.4% of expenditures total. And then, finally, we have, did I miss something? No, the contingency funds. I do want to mention, you see on, am I on the right page there? I do want to mention, you see on, am I on the right page there? Okay, so you see the revenue of that state revenue of 2.9 million, and you also see, that's on line two. And on line five, you see that transfer in from the Pension Rate Stabilization Fund of $718,000. And so, down below, you see on line 17, the 2.9 million dollars offsetting that revenue. And again, that's $1718,000 matches that expenditure we saw early. So this is 2.6% of expenditures. So, the resource, the DFAC is working on a resource allocation model. And our consultant will be meeting with the council for the first time, I believe, next week, next Thursday. So, we'll be expecting to come back to you with some information about that. And meanwhile, there is information on other funds. So restricted general funds are on page 13 to 16, capital outlays 17 to 19, and so forth. So, if you want to read about those, there's actually a really good explanation in the budget book itself. And we will be adding more funds later, so that, the goal is actually to have some sort of summary of all the funds in the budget book. FTS this year, reported and achieved, our reported was 15,937. Our actual achieved was 16,270. And that had to do with, we had that rolled FTS back to 17,18. So, moving forward, we hope that we can achieve the 16,270 or something near that. However, there are unintended impacts of the YFA contract. And so, the schedule is costing more than we had known, and will be, the colleges are working with that, if those impacts, we're working with the colleges. And we're hoping to find efficiencies to offset some of that, and we'll continue to move forward in that regard. And then finally, the FON. Last year, we had a FON number of 290, and our reported was 303. As of 8:00 this morning, our FON was 280. And however, that was moved up to, to, I think, 93 this afternoon? Yeah, it was moved up this afternoon, but a large part of it was based on growth. And so I didn't understand how a district that dropped its FTS ended up with growth. But, you know, these are mysteries that we can uncover at another time. So, we are above FON in either event. And so, our opportunities and challenges are the same as they were at tentative budget. We keep working on these items. Obviously, the student-centered funding formula does provide opportunity if it's fully funded. And if they keep the rules, you know, if you're going to compete, you have to have the rules stay the same. But if they change, not even from year to year, but from, you know, one part of the year to the next, it's very hard to operate. So, we'll continue to do our best to protect the district and to not end up in a situation, which I know another district did, where a very small district owed the chancellor's office back $2 million. So, we don't want to end up in that position. Guided pathways is an opportunity, as is college and careers access pathways. Those are opportunities for our students, and so those are items that we, you know, we have to find ways to support. Our challenges are obviously the new student-centered funding formula. Personnel expenditures continue to increase, and then maintaining YCCD's fiscal indicators at appropriate levels. So, that is the fiscal presentation, and Sarah didn't jump up and say, "You forgot it all," so I'm happy for that. I know she is. I can see it going, flying out. Yeah. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
I'd just like to point out, I mean, you did a good job breaking it all down. I think we have some other challenges. The fact that, you know, the accreditation team pointed out that we need to have total cost of ownership in our information technology, and we're now at a point where we're not fully funding that, I think is a huge red flag. Our OPEB or other post-employment benefits, not putting that money in there. I think the last time, we were at 31, 32 million in?
We are not 33.
33, okay. So normally, we're putting in, what, about 1.1 million into that fund to shore it up?
Additional.
975?
Is off the last actuary.
Okay. But normally, in the past, we were around 1 to 1.1. And our expenditures out of that fund are about 2 million?
Up to 3.
Up to 3, okay. So, you know, as you can see, that's another huge challenge. But I think the biggest challenge is when the governor's office says, "For a couple years, we're going to help stabilize your STIRS and PERS rates." Well, thank you, Governor Newsom, for that brief respite in the rising cost of our pensions. But there's going to be a problem down the road, because that money will go away, and at the same time it goes away, the rates get fully baked in. So, now what do you do? If they're not fully funding the new formula, and now the money comes out for the increased costs, and the rates are now fully baked in, you're having to pick up the full cost now. And, you know, on transparency with the budget, and we brought this up at the Finance Committee meeting, and I know Trustee Rojas, I don't know if Trustee Aguilar wants to make a comment, but I would ask that when you do your town halls, there's probably going to be some, and I'm glad, I'm very happy that you're doing this, I think there's going to be some interesting dialogue. And I think people need to understand, and I'm happy to hear that you're willing to make it more transparent and make some changes down the road, but just to give everyone out in the audience, and those that are going to stay up late and watch this on YouTube, that, Kim's laughing, I know she does it, I know, every Wednesday. But, and that is that, you know, central services, people are going to say, you know, "Well, wait a minute, Columbia and MJC's budgets are going down, but central services' budget is going up, and they're going to look at that as a value statement, why is that occurring?" Well, other costs are going up, and, you know, central services pays for a lot of things for the colleges, i.e., electricity for both MJC and Columbia come out of the central services. So we all know electrical rates are going up, so we have to park more money into the central services budget to account for those expenses. Water, so all the water that we use at the colleges, both colleges, get parked into central services. And part of the Finance Committee dialogue is that, you know, to make it more transparent, to make it more efficient from a budgeting standpoint, is to park that money where the expense actually is. So, you know, MJC's costs are realistic, and you know what they are going forward, and Columbia is the same way. And so I just, when people are at these town halls, keep those things in mind as our fiscal staff are explaining these things. And also, I would ask you, because I know it's going to come up, our general fund reserve. How much is it? When do we execute it? You know, when do we pull the big red handle and say, "We're going to take money out of there"? Why is it 10%? Why can't it be 0? Why, you know, why can't it be 5%? I mean, right. I mean, there are some districts that are 15 to 20% general fund reserve.
25 for fund balance.
Yeah. And I would probably be safe to say that a lot of those are basic aid districts. So, that, I think, make that, make a note and make that part of your town hall discussion. But we're in some very interesting times. And I say that because, you know, community colleges are really where people are going to get a quality, an access to a quality education. And the state of California needs to accept its responsibilities, especially in areas like ours, where the socioeconomic conditions are such that if you're not funding these institutions, people are not going to reach their educational goals. We've already seen the value of stepping up and just providing bus passes, and the impact that can have. But when you're not addressing the formula that you created, and you wanted us to all buy into, and now you're pulling the rug out from under us, is not fair to these students in these communities, that this is their only access to a quality education, so.
Thank you, Darren. I would just like to correct, this isn't the first time I've heard this, all of the budgets went up, at the colleges and at the central services. And I think the colleges were in the 5-point somethings, and central services was like 7.1. So ours did go up a little more, but every budget went up.
Right. And that, I just think, I understand it, but not everybody is.
No, I do appreciate.
So I think if you make a note and talk about that, you're going to be ahead of the game.
I didn't know if every board member knew that. Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thanks so much for your attention.
Okay, so my understanding is that I have to hold a public hearing. So, the public hearing is now open. Are there any comments from the public? No. The public hearing is closed. Someday, somebody surprise me and actually make a comment. Okay, so, I now need a motion that we adopt the district's 2019, 2020 final budget as attached to the September 11th agenda, and authorize staff to prepare and file the necessary financial and budget report with the required agencies.
Hello?
Okay, Darren? Antonio? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we are now up to board comments. I'll start with Nancy. I'm sorry. Remind me next time.
Okay. I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor of Finance, and also our newest Vice Chancellor of, I can't remember exactly what it is, but for taking the time out yesterday and spending a few hours with some of us on the board, and going over the budget, and explaining how the numbers were arrived, because that helped us with not having questions this evening. I attended the Policy and Procedures meeting, and we're getting really close to the due process being completed, or at least starting the process to get to the final adoption. And I missed some of the exciting things at the beginning of the year, because I was down for my mom's 88th birthday. My brother happened to fly in from Louisiana, and I couldn't miss that, because we don't get to see each other very often. I woke up today very much aware of where I was 18 years ago. I was a middle school teacher, and my class was about half-full. And a lot of the students that day had a lot of questions. Parents started coming and picking up their kids before noon. Just wanted to hug them, just wanted to realize that they were safe. And as bad as that day was, I want us to take a moment and remember what September 12th was like, what the Sunday following September 11th was like. People, the churches around the country, synagogues, temples, whatever, were full. The flags in the stores were sold out. We were no longer on the left or on the right, this way or that way, we were all Americans. And let's remember where we were September 12th, and the feeling that we had, even though we're still questioning September 11th, but September 12th brought this country together in a way that we have not seen since that year. And that, to me, is really sad, because if we were to join together, we would be a whole lot better off. And it just brings me, every year I think of that, because the school was just, you know, parents were staying with their students the next day for like, an hour, even in middle school. The kids were like, "Okay, Mom, you can go to work now." You know, but Mom didn't want to leave, you know, Johnny or Suzie there, they wanted to make sure that they were going to be there. And so, I appreciate you guys, and just hug your loved ones, and remember, you know, that we are here. So, that's all.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Nancy. I also feel as though that ever since 9/11, the country has become more united in its own nationalistic kind of way. In other ways, institutions are trying to also put that into their systems themselves. So, I went to the Policy and Procedures Committee with Nancy and the chancellor, along with Kim, right? And that was pretty interesting, getting to know how all these policies and procedures are put forth to protect students and keep an institution going even through those times. I also met with the Student Senate of ASCC and ASMJC for the first time, and I was able to meet all the students that were represented there. There was quite a handful, but I look forward to working with them more, as they tell me more about campus issues and safety issues, as well as student needs. I also had a meeting with Shantou about safety as well, about fire safety, and maybe about preserving the environment at Columbia College, setting up maybe more recycling centers and other good things for the campus. One thing I thought that was very interesting, a part of ASMJC, was that they're doing inter-club regulating, where clubs that aren't really attached to, let's say, ASMJC, clubs are trying to send representatives to go sit in at those meetings and have a voice themselves. So, even those constituent groups are represented in ASMJC, and I thought that was an important quality to share. But, yeah, that concludes my report and comment for the board meeting.
Thank you. Anne?
I attended the CSEA breakfast, the MJC scholarship event, the Columbia College, this is already mentioned, adjunct orientation, and the in-service at Columbia College. I also intended the MJC Institute Day and actually stayed longer than any other trustee. And, well, just thought I'd mention that. And I, Chancellor Young mentioned that he and I went to Gustine to talk with the superintendent, and it was a very, very successful meeting. Henry did a wonderful job of explaining the possible options that we could provide for the Gustine students, and the difficulties of providing it and finding instruction to a district that's so far away. Gustine is actually in Reseda County, but they're in YCCD district. But I thought Henry did a really wonderful job, and Brian Ballinger, the superintendent, was very appreciative to get some attention, finally, from YCCD, so that was very important to me, and I want to thank Henry for that and let you know what a good job he did. I attended along with a couple other trustees, the SCO, which is the Stanislaus County Office of Education fundraising dinner, and the Policy and Procedure, Board Policy and Procedure Committee meeting on Monday, and budget study session on Tuesday, and meeting today. Gosh, I don't know what I'm going to do tomorrow, but that's my report.
All the stuff you didn't get done today. Margie?
Thank you. I didn't get a chance last time to say how much I enjoyed the Great Valley Nature Lab opening and ribbon cutting. It was beautiful, and what a lovely addition to learning and doing, learning by doing. And also, that same day, I'm sure Nancy already mentioned this last time, but I hadn't had a chance to publicly thank Dean Borges for an incredible tour of the Ag facilities. And... and meeting with students, Ag student, an Ag student who we interviewed over at the dorm. And then also some of the professors that teach in that program. And then every aspect of it, I mean, wow. Just really impressed with everything that goes on over there. I love the Columbia College District Faculty in Service for a couple of reasons. Those of us that were there know how very inspiring you are, Dr. B. And your tone that you set to launch the year was just so magnetic. And sometimes that in-service, I know all of us have a lot on our minds and we're in the back row doing a bunch of things. But everybody is mesmerized and engaged with your message. Just is so fantastic. But the second thing that I loved equal, I'll say equally, was that each of the departments present, as if, as if their colleagues don't know what they do. But each of them, and thank you, Brian Sanders, for encouraging me to stay to listen to that part of it because it was wonderful. They talk about the, the degrees that they offer and who teaches what. And in kind of a fun, there's that word, fun way. Engaging and comical in many ways, but clearly focused on, on student achievement. And what a highlight of the day for me to hear each of those instructors say something wonderful about what they do and what they love doing. I'm excited to attend the Columbia College Academic Senate, thank you Pam, on Friday at 1:30. I appreciate your enthusiastic response and so loving, thank you. And then finally, in the spirit of access and equity, and I know that someone's taking notes of this, that I, I would, I would like this board to consider thinking about in the next few months, the, the number of board meetings that are held at Columbia College be increased to a minimum of four, no less than four, for obvious reasons for, and mostly for students and faculty to participate more regularly from Columbia College in this process. And that's my report.
Thank you. Darren?
I don't have anything really to say. I gave the balance of my time to Shelley earlier, so, so we're all good. No, yeah, there we go. Now, I want to, first of all, thank everyone for the opportunity and the invite to the new faculty orientation lunch. It was really nice to, to not only catch up again with the faculty that, that I know and see on a regular basis, but the new faces that are coming in and their stories and their energy and, and everything that they hope to achieve with their students. So that's the second time I've gone and, and I want to thank you for that invitation. Obviously, I went to the Board Finance Committee Meeting here recently, the classified staff breakfast and seeing everyone and again, catching up and, and talking to classified staff and faculty and everybody that's there, it's really great. And then the Institute Day. I just want to say that, obviously, I haven't been here a long time, that this is, I think now my third Institute Day or thereabouts. The comments that I got, and I stayed longer than you think. But the comments that, that I got from faculty, just hearing them talk and the faculty that I talked to overwhelmingly said that was one of the best Institute Day presentations that, that they have seen in a long time. So the, the committee that put that together, all the people that spoke, our, our guest speakers and, and the topics were all well-received. And I want to thank everybody for, for putting that together, so that's it.
Tony?
I'm going to make my quick. Thank you for being here, still with us. I know it's kind of late and I see some tired faces. But this past month, I did a couple of meetings with our chancellor. One of them in particular that is pretty close to, to me, was about the Hispanics attending the STEM curriculum and improving our success with them and just trying to find more opportunities for them to succeed. And I was, it was awesome to hear everybody about the buses passes. And I, once again, I just want to tell you guys that I commend you for doing whatever you can to pursue your education and, and not stopping because of the lack of money or a car. So I appreciate all your stories. I also went to the, on September 3rd, to the Finance Committee. It's very interesting. Every time I go, I learn a little bit more and then getting better, better at it. And it's thank to you guys that even like Darren said, even I kind of understand it a little bit better now. So and that's all of the good job that you guys do in putting it together. So I appreciate that. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So I went to the usual meetings, the debriefs and the, all of that. But I also went to the adjunct in-service at Columbia and the in-service day, which, you know, by necessity is more intimate than the one at MJC. So it's not like you go to the same thing and then get a rerun the next day. They're very different. But they were both really enjoyable. And I also went to the SCO dinner, the fundraising dinner, and the pre-budget presentation where, like Tony, I'm starting to understand it a little better. Part of it is just learning the whole new vocabulary. And then, you know, the, the normal meeting. So I will actually make mine, I think, the shortest. I'm done and I think we're done? Oh, we have to go back? Oh, that's right, okay. So we are going to bop over there, adjourn here and go over there and then re-adjourn again for real. But, but we're done in here. So thank you very much for being here.